Hello and one and all, Happy New Year.
Hello.
Hi Bill.
Hello David, how are you?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you Bill, can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries. First item after that is announcements. First, I want to quickly run over the public comment thing, is that every person will have an opportunity to speak one time per agenda item. So whatever your points are, make sure you get them lined up so that when you're called on to speak, you can cover everything you want to cover. Alright, announcements, the Christmas light winners. First, I want to thank Amanda so much for going out there with her kids and seeing all those houses in the dark. And thank you Amanda too for putting the pictures in, that was really wonderful.
You're welcome.
Like that. It's so much better than just imagining anything, oh gosh, I didn't drive by 133 North Fork or whatever. So that's really cool. So our first place winner is at 313 North Fork Avenue, a beautiful display. The second place is at 225 Clark. And our third place winner was at 319 Poplar. And we have a couple of runners up. One is the infamous town manager and chief of police's house, which is amazing. They can see that from the space station, I swear. Alright, congratulations to everyone. Oh, and also 635 Shady Lane, got a nice honorable mention as well. So thank you Amanda, thank you everybody for turning on your lights, it was really pretty this year. Alright, moving on, let's do any other announcements? Alright, seeing none, let's move on to recognition of visitors and guests. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak on a subject that is not on the agenda. Do we have things? Yes, we do. So we have, first up, I see Charles Markle has his hand up.
Is my audio okay?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thanks. Alright, first of all, I think this is probably the first meeting for a lot of us in 2021, so I want to say Happy 2021, Happy New Year. And I'd kind of like to do a quick recap, I think, of the way I feel about 2020. And some comments from the last meeting, and it shouldn't take too long, just a couple of minutes. So I apologize for detour. But first, I'd like to start with why I started coming to meetings in the first place. My experiences with town, basically, from the first time I talked to Ken Knight on the phone, have just not been positive or productive. I feel like the costs that I pay as a resident in town just don't merit the services that are provided. And I'm familiar with the budget and everything, and I know where the costs go. And I know everything's expensive. But that's kind of what the impetus for my first attendance at meetings was to show up and understand where my money was going and see if I could do something about it. And I feel like I keep coming to meetings because I think I can help with that. So if I, like, the purpose of my attendance here is to try and be helpful. So if I'm ever not helpful, please tell me so. And this kind of works into Mary's comment before about speaking time and public input. And I feel like it's probably a common feeling for a lot of people that attend these meetings. But you know, if I'm wasting people's time, please contact me privately and just let me know. I'm totally open to feedback. And I feel like the purpose of what everybody's doing here is to advance the will of Peonia, like the will of the public. And I think that when the public isn't heard, that works against that goal. So I spoke with Mary this week, this weekend, I guess, and asked her to consider revising her policy of public input. And I'm basically reaching out to you trustees as well and asking you to consider the importance of public input and the process that we're doing and in what happens here. And I think that conversation is a very important part and dynamic and productive part of what happens. And also to Mary's point, at the last meeting, the actual meeting times for her meetings are about 20 to 30 minutes shorter than Charles's meetings. And I did not do any research as to where that time was spent. But just as an average comedian, it's about 20 to 30 minutes shorter. And basically, I think the greatest place that I can see improvement happening in 2021 is directly addressed by Dave's comments, the last meeting regarding trust. And I think that the the solution to any problems that we might be having or improving the conditions and value of what happens in town is actually not trust. And in fact, I think that trust might be the exact opposite of what we want, because that's what was given to Kristin Chesnick. And we know exactly what happened with that level of trust that was given. And so I'm asking that in 2021, our goal be transparency rather than trust. And I think that Neil, hopefully, I don't know if he's on the call, but can maybe help me out, or I see it basically with Neil, I feel like he's always been very straightforward. He's never done the ego trip cop thing. And he's worked to use cameras on officers and in cars. Basically, he doesn't ask us to trust him, because he has, he works transparently. Which I think is a really good model and will prove its value moving forward. I guess for the next year and probably forever. But that was, that was the crux of what I had to say. In general, I feel like the world is in a really bad spot right now. And the more we can come together and spend time seeing each other's faces and talking in whatever manner we can, I think, is productive. So thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Thomas. Alright, good hand up from caller in user one. I don't know. What's happened to them? Are you there?
Is that, I?
Oh.
4544?
All I have is calling.
Is that working?
But that must be you, because you're now unmuted.
Okay, and I think it sounded like there were two people that raised their hands. So this is Paige Smith at 215 Delta Avenue, and thank you Mayor Bachren. And I actually have several comments, suggestions, and some kudos that have to do with the agenda. And my first comment is that there's not been any reference to Resolution Number 201710, which is actually part of the agenda and begins on page three. So this was adopted as the template for how an agenda should be designed. And the first thing I wanted to bring up was, on that template, there are two kinds of business, unfinished business and new business. And I've noted that those two have been abandoned and been covered by regular business. So my comment is that I don't really know what regular business is. Would it be, would you have a regular business? You know, usually goes with hand in hand. But I think the use of unfinished business and new business is much more instructive to the public and to the trustees as to where a particular agenda item is in your, in the queue. Has it been talked about before, has it not? So that is my suggestion, is to go back to the unfinished business, new business as part of the resolution. And I want to point out that at the bottom of that resolution, there is Roman numeral four, subject to amendment, section one, deviations. The board may deviate from the procedures set forth in this resolution if, in its sole discretion, such deviation is necessary under the circumstances. So with regard to this new terminology of business that's been in this agenda, and I believe the last two, has the board decided that? You know, have you as a board decided that you are going to abandon unfinished and new business and substitute regular business? So that's my first comment. My second comment, as Thomas alluded to, has to go back to the December 15th meeting. And about 37 minutes into the meeting, Mayor Bachren, when asked why people could only speak once, you had responded, according to state law, we are only required to take public comment at the very beginning of the meeting, and we don't have to take public input on every agenda item. I have no idea what that state law is, I'm not familiar with it. But this second piece of that is, I would like to point everybody to section eight of the Resolution Number 201710 regarding public comment. It says, after, and by the way, this is on page three of your agenda packet, after discussion of an agenda item by the Board of Trustees has concluded, the mayor shall open the floor for comment from members of the public who shall be allowed the opportunity to comment or ask questions on the agenda items. So I'm bringing this up because this is a resolution which sort of negates the comment that you made Mayor Bachren, that you don't have to take public input on every agenda item. So I just wanted to put that out there. And so then, on top of that, again, I kind of echo what Thomas was saying. You all have chosen to, you know, serve the public as trustees and mayor. And we have a very small town, and I believe that the public brings much good information to the board for their consideration and has probably modified the way some of the business is conducted. So I know at times it's irritating to have someone ask multiple questions on an agenda item, but if we are limited to one time to speak right now, and I should ask a question, and I get that question answered, very often, you need to follow up with another question to answer in order to understand what's going on. And I think that helps the trustees as well, and other public in attendance and future people that may be listening to one of the calls. So I would, I respectfully request that you not limit people to a single comment and that, you know, use another leadership approach if someone is speaking too long or is getting off topic. So those are my comments about the agenda. But I have a kudos, and that is, it's, one, it's been wonderful that the links work in this agenda. And two, the the written reports by the administrator, Travis Public Works, and Cindy for the Treasurers Court is very, very helpful. And I want to thank you for including that in these. Thank you very much.
Thank you Paige. Okay, we've got James iPhone up next.
Yes, I think that's me. Can you hear me?
Yes, would you please identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Joan Hunt. And I've been living in, I bought a house on, at 220 North Fork Avenue about four months ago. And I came from Santa Fe. And I feel like I have found the most perfect place for me. And, you know, I really like it here. And I think that building community, as we've talked about already, is really, really important. And I don't feel it in the winter here, it's partly because of COVID, yes. But I mean, I think that we need more drawing together because of everything. Anyway, my proposal is we look into creating a really simple, cheap skating rink. And we just flood an area, and I've done a little research, and I mean, just peripherally, and it can be done. Um, I think that the kids need it, the young children and the teenagers really need it. I've talked to a few of them. That I said, what do we do in the winter? And they said, ah, we pretty much stay inside, and they weren't happy about it. So I think a skating rink is going to draw our community together and help our kids stay happy and healthy and safe. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you Joan, and welcome to Peonia.
Oh, thank you very much.
Alright.
Now, what will happen from now on? I mean, I made a proposal, right?
You know, we don't actually give feedback at this portion of the program. It will be taken up and you will get a response. Either at the next meeting, or if we have any kind of contact. I would advise you to email Corinne and put your proposal forward, and then we can get back to you and discuss it.
Oh, I get to discuss it, because I think that's important.
Yeah, so email.
Yeah, we would discuss it. Yeah, oh great, okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you Joan. Alright. Next up is a phone number with the last four digits, 2329. You are on.
Okay, I couldn't remember what to press, unmute myself. This is Suzanne Watson, and I wasn't at 903 Second Street. And I wasn't actually going to comment tonight, because I hadn't prepared myself to make this comment. But, so I guess I'd like to just make it a preview of something that perhaps I can go into in depth more, prepare this comment, my thoughts about meetings a little bit more. And that is, you know, when I first started going to meetings, I didn't, it was 20 years ago. I didn't understand Robert's rules, you know, it was pretty new to me. And it's always been something that, since it's not something I use in my daily life, it's something that's a struggle to get one's mind around and to understand the parameters and the rules and for this and that, and to be skilled at it. So Robert can be a challenge. So of course, I'm interested in it still, and I try to educate myself, you know, by going online and finding information out about Robert's rules and how good meetings are run. And I'd like to point something out that I've been noticing with this council. And I saw it happen during the last meeting, and it was kind of upsetting to me. And that is, when trustees make motions right off the top, an agenda item is brought up, and a motion is made, and all of a sudden, you're thrust into one direction of action while you discuss the motion and the weather to vote on it. And what specifically I'm talking about is the water committee. And when one trustee comes on and immediately makes a motion to nominate somebody for this committee, before there's even a chance to like get our feet under us and to say, this many people applied, and we want to thank everybody for applying. You know, and having some kind of segue into it. It seems like this person just grabbed the ball and ran for the goal. And everybody was like, you know, it's like, it's really startling, and it's really a little off putting. And I think I've seen this happen before with, for instance, the very first meeting, the motion to hire a certain person as the town administrator. And so I saw this, it was just, it's so sudden. And it doesn't, it doesn't give people a chance to find out where we're all at before these motions are made. So I'm not saying I'm upset with the people who were chosen for the water committee, but it's off putting to the, even the people who have gone out of their way to fill in these applications to feel like they weren't even acknowledged for any discussion that started happening. So I found out, it's called Jurassic Parliament. And unfortunately, she, it's a blog, and you know, she wants you to pay to watch some of her things. But she has some free YouTube videos about good meetings. And there was an idea that she put forth, Ms. Anne McFarlane, JurassicParliament.com. And I think what I'll do is maybe send you guys the link. But she talks about, sometimes she thinks it's really productive to have a round robin before she asks for a motion to be made. And in that way, she can poll every board member, where do you stand on this? You know, just a quick comment from everybody. So everybody just has the chance to let us all know where they're coming from or what concerns are, whatever. And then, at that point, someone makes a motion and things get formal. You know, you could also perhaps do that with the audience. Do the round robin with the board, ask if there are any like specific concerns with the audience. So before a motion is made, the board members just know where everybody's at. And it's basically just a way of, hopefully, communicating a little bit better between the board and the public. So, you know, I think when meetings are friendly and accessible and it feels like people are being listened to, people might be more willing to be involved in government. But when people feel like they're being locked out or pushed out, and things are being, are happening, where they have really no influence and no ability to weigh in, I think people give up. And I think we've seen this problem in Peonia a lot, where there's just a lack of, there's a lack of participation, let's say. And I, I don't know, I talked to one of the water committee people that didn't get, that didn't get chosen. But the fact that nobody was even acknowledged, we didn't know who the applicants were unless you read the text. It would have been nice to have an introduction and a thank you to everybody who applied before any motions were made. And perhaps a discussion of, just a quick poll of where all the board members stood on it, just in general, first. So I'll try to follow up with this more. I, maybe I'll write something, it's a lot of work to prepare comments, but, in writing, but maybe I can, because I think that's something we can all grow to toward the future. And it's about trust and cooperation, and I see some room for improvement. So thanks a lot.
Thank you Suzanne. Anyone else? Alright, seeing none, let's move on to staff reports. Administrators report, Corinne.
Hello, good evening. We'll start with the COVID update. Been getting them pretty regularly in your email, I forward them almost daily. But according to the Delta County COVID website, today, we are still in orange, which is high risk. Unfortunately, our total deaths for Delta County is raised to 35, with four being reported yesterday. And our total two-week positive count is up 6.4% with 385 positive test results. I included a report in the packet, and I also had a couple of additional additional items to discuss. First one, to make the board aware that we received notification that our health plan with Rocky Mountain is not going to continue beyond this this approval period. And so we are actively researching and getting quotes from some other governmental health agencies as well as some of the standard ones we've looked at before, like United and Humana. Let me see here, I have an email, and a follow up on a couple of other things. Want to follow up and let the board know, I had sent out information late in the end of last year about a few trees that were not pruned appropriately on grand. And we are having the contractor follow the recommendations that I received from Cami Long with the Forest Service on how to mediate that so that it doesn't cause any long-term damage. And we are looking into potential to have a training session for some of our local tree service people here over, later in the year, if they choose to participate in that. Working with our IT on forwarding calls in case we need to work out of the office or we can get our telephone calls. It was a little bit trickier than they thought it would be, because our phone system at Town Hall is through our internet Elevate service, and it's not a standard like a TDS. But they think they've figured that out, and will be back down within the next week and a half, and will be able to show us how to program our phones and do what they need to do on our network, so we can forward calls. There has been, in addition to the town website, for the public to comment. If, on the page that the public goes to on our town website to access our agendas, there is a fillable form that they can send general comments or can send in comments specific to upcoming agenda items so that they can be included in the packet if they're received in advance. If they're not received early enough to be included in the packet, they would be provided to the board under separate cover in email, but they will be added to the permanent packet, which is kept in the Town Hall vault. And that way, that will facilitate follow up, whether that be from the board or from the administrative offices. Let's see, the zoning, plans for the zoning and adjustment board, I'm working with Bo on, we're going to schedule our meeting and pick up on some of those outstanding items that are out so that we can get those ordinances and resolutions in front of the board. The Pulis Park information sign is scheduled to be installed this week. And of course, again, that was paid through the CDOT grant to revitalize our downtown area. And there is a request also at the last meeting to look into a dispersment cap for vendors. I'm going to follow up with a couple of questions on that, but I have requested from Cindy and received the list of our vendors so that I could take a look and see who our top vendors are and what those numbers look like, so. Oh, also, for the Goko Parks Master Plan, the typically, the group that that is doing that for us, Western Silk Consulting, they like to do those meetings in person, but they can't. So they're working with their focus group on the best way to have those five meetings. There's five different topics they want to discuss in a virtual format, but get the best outcome and the best participation. They are almost finished creating a website that's specific to this master plan update. And that will be on our website, on all social media, and given out as PSAs to all the news media once it's completed, and that is all I have.
Alright, questions for Corinne from the board? Yeah.
Corinne, I have just a question from your report, the Marijuana Working Group, who is that?
It is the, we have one member from the Police Department, myself, Dale Cecil, Jer Low, and initially, it was also Renee Grossman, although she has decided not to participate. And I received an email today from another gentleman who wanted to participate, so I plan to reach out to him tomorrow and invite him to take her place.
So it's basically the people that stepped up last time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Corinne? Okay, seeing none, anything from the public?
Yes. What is the purpose of the Marijuana Board?
Okay, I'm sorry, could you please identify yourself?
Yes, this is Joan Hunt.
Okay, thank you Joan. Uh, if you have, if you can hit the raise hand function, then we can call on you when you want.
Oh, sorry, I couldn't find it, sorry.
Okay. It is. I don't know. It should be, there should be a, a participant thing that you can click on and at the bottom of that it'll be raise hand. All right, Joan, what was your question?
The purpose of the marijuana board.
Thank you.
The marijuana working group is a selected people that are helping review the proposed ordinance on how the town will regulate and facilitate marijuana sales shops within the town.
And how, how were they, how were they assembled, on what basis?
They volunteered upon the initial review of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you Joan. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Barry?
Anything else? Yes, Bill?
I'd like to follow up on, on, uh, trustees or the town administrators, the written report here.
Yes.
It's evaluating, uh, collaborating with Blue Sage and DMEA, uh, Elevate for, uh, offer wifi in the town park. She brings that up, number six on her list. And I was wondering who's gonna pay for the wifi?
That's part of what the, the evaluation and collaboration is, is working out, um, what the cost, once it's in. DMEA has stated that they, they have some interest to help to defer some costs, but that's still, right now, it's still in the early phases and all of that would come to the board, um, if we were going to make any kind of long-term monetary commitment.
Okay, thank you. And the second one, number seven, uh, Black Hills and the tampering, is there something we need to be concerned about?
Well, I'm sure most of you have heard that there were some issues with, um, Black Hill services being tampered with in other communities. And out of that, and some of that was done, um, basically by hacking. They hacked in to their computer networks and their services and, um, were able to cause, I mean, they wreaked havoc in several communities. Um, and so out of that is of course a heightened awareness that, um, reaching out to Brown's Hill and our other, um, providers who have provided us those softwares and, and with our IT department, making sure that our networks are secure at, as best as they can be so that we, um, don't fall victim to something like that. I, I wouldn't think we were, I've had no indication that we would. It just brought an awareness to it, so it's something that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate one of the public comments that, um, uh, I believe that was Paige that gave kudos for the written reports. I agree with that. I really appreciate having those written reports in the packet. So thank you for, for making that happen.
You're welcome.
All right, last call for the public? All right, hearing none, let's move on to Public Works Utilities. Travis?
Good evening. Um, you did see the written report. Did have to, um, we'll have this spill report and a production next board meeting and also the update on the sanitary survey next meeting for everybody. Brown Hills was out today, um, at the One Million Gallon Water Plant. They did run into a few issues, um, programming and stuff. But should, should be able to remote in now and finish up this week is their plan. Um, bulk, the bulk water fill station, I did get a confirmation email back from them today that, um, it shipped today. So we should see that Monday is what their confirmation said. So that will be on the schedule to get installed. Did, did find a company that could help me with ammonia levels on our rolling average, our two-year rolling average at the sewer plant, um, for ammonia. The product, uh, initial dosage is about $2,000 and then it is a maintenance cost of about $1,500 a year. So I'm looking, looking into that more. I'm still waiting on costs. Um, SGS, um, did, um, do a, um, COVID analysis in the wastewater. I'm just waiting on costs from them. Um, and they're supposed to be getting me some information that it may not cost us anything. They may do it through a grant portion of it. So I'm still waiting on that. Um, the high school meter installation that was scheduled for December, I had to move it out till February, till the next school break. Um, the day we were scheduled to do that ended up being cold and we ended up unthawing lots of residential water meters that day. So we had to postpone that. Um, we are doing straight, trying to do straight maintenance with the potholes and stuff and keep up on that. And then, um, with, uh, the, then we're starting to do the evaluation, evaluations on what were street projects, where we're gonna start those and stuff like that. Um, and that's all I've got unless you guys have any questions.
All right, questions for us from the board? Yes, Bill?
A couple of questions. Um, uh, one on your spillage report. I would appreciate you including a, a total number of taps. It'd make any difference if they're residential, commercial, industrial, just a number. And then, uh, secondly, the sewer plant level, I think I've asked before, but, uh, is there anything with the sewer plant that we need to change? Or is it just, or, and what's driving the sewer, the ammonia levels up?
The, um, I will get the number of taps onto that schedule. Um, the ammonia levels, um, are ranging, um, when it gets cold, the ammonia levels seem to be going up. Um, the, I talked to a couple of engineers and also, um, some, uh, other operators. And their, their biggest thing is that our nitrification levels in our pond are dropping, um, and causing it because our sludge levels are coming up a little bit. Um, I mean, we're still only at 20, 28 to 30% of sludge capacity in the plant, but it seems to be causing a lot more issues with our ammonia levels. Not so much our BODs or anything else, it's just our ammonia levels.
Well, currently we're at 20 to 25% of capacity.
Uh, 28 to 30% capacity on our sludge levels.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Travis? Okay, yes, Michelle.
Yeah, again, thank you for the written report. I appreciate that. Um, one question, the, um, the cement truck washout on town property, was there a final decision on how that was remediated or will be remediated?
Um, after talking with the state health department, they, they suggest going in there after it dries out and, um, digging down about six, six to eight inches below the surface, um, and exposing it in the landfill and then re-leveling it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, seeing none, anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the police report, Neil. You're muted, Neil.
Thank you. She unmuted me. Um, I'm, have, uh, or I'll be pretty quick. Basically, I hope everybody had a good holiday. Um, we did order the police vehicle after the special meeting. Um, hopefully it'll be here next week. Um, after they go through it and make sure everything's good in it and everything. Um, we are doing a lot of training still, a lot of specialized training that the officers are going to. Um, and, um, they are working a lot on traffic control at this point in time. So make sure to, uh, come to complete stops and make sure to watch your speed because they are doing a lot of traffic control. So other than that, that's about all I have for you.
All right, questions for Neil from the board? Yes, Dave?
Um, one question, I noticed a lot of parking problems and that made me think about last winter where some, several times vehicles were left on the street for the entire winter without moving and they interfered with plowing, those kind of things. I just wondered if there's a plan to take care of that issue this year?
Yes, vehicles are supposed to, uh, they're supposed to move every 72 hours. A vehicle is supposed to be moved, um, per the ordinance or it can become an abandoned vehicle. So if we've noticed a pileup of, uh, snow or something around them, we'll actually go write them a red tag and then let them know that, uh, that they are in violation and they would have to move so that way they can get around and plow. Or we can just go and knock on the door and ask them if they can move their vehicle so that way we can get the snow moved.
Thank you.
Okay, Tammy?
Um, has anybody been contacted about not removing snow from their sidewalks? I just know we have a brand new section of sidewalk that at least a couple of days ago hadn't been touched. A lot of money in that sidewalk and has yet to be shoveled. So has anybody been contacted, warned or cited for failure to remove snow from?
Yes, on the blotter, most of those code enforcement ones are, um, going to be sidewalk violations. Um, what we're doing this year, and I don't know if it's, I don't know if we'll have to do something a little different, but what we're doing is Joanne is actually going out and doing the same things that she did whenever she was doing code enforcement, um, writing a letter to the owners of the residents and then sending the letter to them. I think that that may be a little, uh, time, uh, taking a little bit more time than what I would like. So I'm thinking we'll probably end up just going back to doing red tags and the officers will see it and go knock on the door, give them a red tag and let them know that they need to get their sidewalk done. So that way it doesn't have to go through the mail and, and it's a little quicker of a process.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, questions for Neil? Yes, Karen?
Is there any fine or anything for not removing this snow? I mean, what, what if they don't?
Then we can summon them into court.
They have to go to court?
Yeah. Right now, as of now, yes, they would have to go into court, um, because we don't have a penalty assessment set up for that. That's part of the process that we're gonna be going through this year is getting all the new penalty assessments and fines and fees set up for some of these. So that way that if it does happen, they can be assessed a penalty assessment, which is a fine, um, rather than having to go to court. Like, uh, most of our stuff already is fine-based.
If they were to have a fine, could that just be something that's added to their water bill or something or, or?
No, it's a, it would be a criminal act. So they would actually have to go through and be cited by an officer or a code enforcement if we were to, uh, uh, give, uh, Joanne the power to write citations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Michelle?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate a suggestion I made on the snow at the last meeting that, uh, maybe when we're reviewing those penalties, we could have a system whereby if there's a fine, then that fine goes to a town operation to get the sidewalks clear so that the ultimate result is safer sidewalks for our citizens, regardless of whether the homeowner takes responsibility for it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, and Nick?
Yeah, is, is there a way that we could get an idea of what, uh, what training our police department, uh, is, is giving our, our men?
Absolutely. I have, um, right now they're in the process of switching over. Um, so generally what we do is we add all of our training into one system that post, uh, um, monitors, um, post board being, you know, the police officer standards board. They're actually switching over right now, so we can't have access to that. The go-live date on the new one is the 20th and I'm assuming that's where all the, or all of our training that we've put in there will come back in there. And it's, it's pretty easy for me to pull it on up. So if you ever want a copy of it, um, you know, I can go ahead and give that no problem at all.
On the 20th, huh?
That's what they're saying is, is the new go. It was the 18th and then all of a sudden I got an email from Post saying that the new go-live date's the 20th.
And we've already had one officer attend a week. Was it week-long training, Neil?
Yes, he just got back from Littleton. He did, um, defensive tactics. He became an instructor, um, in defensive tactics. And we had our SRO officer at the end of the month, at the end of December, go and do, um, a two-day, um, SRO class as well. So while we have it and while they're able to be going around, um, we're planning on just doing as much training as possible as we can.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none, anything from the public? Yes, Suzanne?
Hi, um, I was just curious, um, Neil, um, okay, I didn't, I, I wasn't aware of it on the day that it happened, but I heard there was a deer hit again on Second Street. And I've seen deer hit before, dead deer in front of my house or near my house. And I wanted to know what day that occurred on and if you could let people know what happened. Because I think there's a real deer problem in this town. People drive awfully fast at night and it's really dangerous for everybody. Um, when, you know, um, people are driving fast and jumping, and deer are jumping out and, and they get hit. It's, it can cause accidents. Um, so can you tell us what happened? What day that was on and, and how the officers had, had to respond to that one?
I'll have to look it up. I don't have it in front of me. Um, I'm trying to look it up, but I could definitely get that information and let you know.
Well, just, can you know, can you just let everybody know what happened? Just, I think the trustees need to know, uh, that deer do get hit. And, um, you know, tell us what, I just heard about it from a neighbor that this injured deer that couldn't get up was on Delta Street and an officer had to come and slit its throat. I mean, and it's just, uh, some bystanders found it and they call, or I don't know if it was the driver, but I don't know if you reported this. I don't know if you're acknowledging the fact that there's this deer issue in town and it seems to be getting worse. I've never seen it this heavy before.
Right, we do have a lot of them in town and that actually was my call. Um, I actually, it was on Delta, uh, the 700 block of Delta. Its back end was completely gone and no, it was not reported by any vehicle. Um, somebody, a citizen had reported it. Um, and so we let it sit there, uh, went back a couple of hours later, it was still there. Went up on it, tried to get it to get up, it wouldn't get up. Um, I pressed, or I personally do not like to, um, put animals down using a gun in town limits. So we went ahead and euthanized it that way. Um, and then, uh, took it out of there and gave it to the DOW because it was a pretty good-sized buck.
Okay, thank you Suzanne.
Well, thanks for explaining that, thank you. And thanks for, thanks for putting it out of its misery, that sounds awful.
I don't like doing it at all. And I really do like your deer sign, by the way.
Oh, thank you. That's creative, I just did something a little different, okay.
All right, if there's nothing else, then let's move on to the attorneys. Oh, wait, Thomas?
Thanks, uh, just a, one, one quick, um, comment regarding the parking. Um, from what I recall and just a quick glance at, um, Unicode, I'm seeing that the 72-hour limit applies to, um, restricted vehicles. Like there's, uh, basically motorhomes, RVs, trailers and stuff like that. But I don't see anything for, uh, regular cars. Um, so if, if we're gonna have a policy of moving vehicles, we might want to reflect that code. Thank you.
Right, it's under state statute, it, it applies to abandoned vehicles.
Uh, right on, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Thomas. All right, nothing else? I don't see anyone, all right, thank you Neil. Let's move on to attorney's report, Bo.
Thank you all. I, I was not a good student and did not provide a written report, um, for the packet. Uh, that being said, I, I really haven't had anything substantive. I think Corinne hit on a couple of issues that we have, um, upcoming. Um, and there should be a couple of agenda items in terms of, uh, an update in the Eric Pace versus Town of Peonia case. Um, and an update with the ditch company in the next packet. Um, and an update with the ditch company in the next packet. Um, just kind of a, based on where those things stand, but um, I'm happy to answer any questions that the trustees might have.
All right, questions, uh, questions for the attorney from trustees? Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, not actually a question. I just wanted to check in. Um. I know we've had a lot of updates that came quickly regarding the uh, building uh, inspection contract. And a lot of that um, happened between meetings. So I just wanted to see if we could get a quick update on where it's at and uh, get a copy of that contract. In the next packet, just for public record.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. As I understand and Corinne can weigh in, but there's just a standalone agreement um, at the moment with other agencies and then. Um, subsequent to that, I think we want to look at something more formal. So. Uh, I anticipate that that will be an agenda item in terms of if there's going to be an RFP or if that's going to go with the committee or what.
And I will put that in, Michelle.
All right, anything else from the board? Seeing none, anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The uh. Finance and Personnel Committee along with the Finance Director and myself. Reviewed uh, per board authorization, the payroll and dispersments for the period ending twelve thirty, twenty twenty. And they will be uh. Propered for approval. Um, under dispersments. We've also reviewed the payroll and dispersments for the current period, one twelve, tw- twenty twenty-one. And uh, that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. King from the board? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to dispersments.
And we have a motion. We have, um. We have um. Two different dispersments this time because of the, of the holiday. And so uh, we have dispersments for the period, uh, December eleventh to December thirtieth. Uh, and so I moved that we approve payment of accounts payable for that period for forty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. The credit card payment for four thirty-six, forty-two. Uh, the Norris retirement payment, sixteen hundred eighty dollars. And then transfer to, to the, for the twelve eighteen payroll of twenty-three thousand, two ninety-nine, seventy-nine. And payroll taxes of twenty-four thousand, one fifty-seven, oh three. And then transfer for the payroll of January one, twenty-one thousand, nineteen fourteen. And payroll taxes for that period of eight thousand, eight fifty-three, eighty-two. And that's, that uh, if we could just do one at a time, that would be the, the first period.
Okay.
Karen, we still, we need to have uh. Payroll, direct payroll.
And that, yes, the transfer and payment of those payrolls. Yes, those direct payroll, same amounts.
Thank you.
All right, so for the first period from twelve eleven to twelve thirty, can I get a second on that motion?
Seconds.
Discussion from the board? Yes, Bill.
Oh, would somebody like to address the civil penalty?
Uh, the civil penalty, that was the uh. The untimely reports for the sewer reports, I mean, the, the. The, we, we send our sewers for uh, to the, to the, to Delta, I guess for uh. Corinne, go ahead, say it.
Okay. So the, um, I believe, I, I'm sorry, and I must have been looking at the wrong. I believe that was, was on the next dispersment.
Maybe on the next dispersment.
But the uh, civil penalty is in response to uh, the failure to. Timely report the sample results for the wastewater system. Um, and it has corrective actions have been taken.
Okay, uh, just for my information, would you forward to us the uh, penalty letter?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. That's the only question I had on that one.
Okay, we're actually doing the next one, Bill. If you have your questions on the next. Because they were reversed order in the packet, so. Yeah. We're doing the older one first.
Okay, well, this is going back to the fact that that was in the first one. Sorry.
So do you have any questions on the second one?
No, no, nothing there.
Okay. Any other questions on the second? Yes, Michelle.
Yep, um, my only question is there's a charge for Vista Intern. Um, and I'm just curious. Where that's coming from. My, my understanding is we, I didn't think we had a Vista Intern right now. I thought that was terminated early in twenty twenty.
It was. Um, during their auditing, they found that there was one invoice that was missed and we confirmed going back through hours that we had missed one dispersment. So we clear, we cleared that account.
Okay, any other questions on that? No? Okay, anything from the public? Thomas? And just FYI, Thomas, we are on the older account, the older dispersment right now from twelve eleven till twelve thirty.
Right, um. Uh, is page forty-five, is that on topic?
It starts on page thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay, so yeah, I think that's, I think that's on topic then. Um, I had a question about, uh, item number seventy, the last thing. Um, item seventy-six, B C Services Incorporated. I Googled that and I think it's a collections agency. Um, are we paying a collections fee?
That was a garnishment payment for an employee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. We have a motion in a second to approve the dispersments for twelve eleven twenty through twelve thirty twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed? Okay, that motion carries. Now let's do the other one from. Twelve thirty to one oh eight.
Okay, um. Yeah, uh, for that period, uh, I moved that we approve. Payments of accounts payable in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, five eighty-nine, oh four. And um, uh, a transfer from the summon account to the operating account of ninety-five thousand dollars. And payment of the loan payment, uh, this is the water power uh, loan. Of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents. And that's it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, discussion from the board. Yes, Bill?
I know, I keep bugging you, but. With cross connection certification, five hundred ninety-five dollars. Uh. Wh- what is a town responsible for on that? Why are we paying that?
That's the per board direction last year. Um, they authorized the town to. Um, hire and pay direct the cross connection inspection company. So that uh, we provided them the list of the locations that have cross connection devices installed and we then pay him and we then bill. Um, the uh, account holder and receive reimbursement. So it's operates similar to a pass through.
Okay, uh, I was curious about that. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Tammy.
I just see the code red's back in here. Could you just give a brief explanation of what code red is and um, maybe let people know that this is. If they're new to town or if they haven't already, they can sign up.
Sure, um, so the code red that's on here, it's our annual fee to participate and. Through, uh, if you go to deltacounty.com, um, right from their homepage, you can list and email a landline or a cellphone. For um, to be provided contact information direct if there was an emergency that rose to the level of um. Requiring an immediate notification and they typically have to do with anything that's a. Um, an emergency that could affect your health, welfare, or safety. And again, it's through uh, deltacounty.com and. I will um, endeavor to provide a direct link to that from our homepage under hot topics as well, um, later this week. Good.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, let's move on to resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one, public posting.
So the resolution is a standard housekeeping, uh, per state statute, we're required to designate. Um, via resolution, our posting place, which is the um, box. Right in front of town hall as well as our newspaper of record where we publish all required notices. And where we also publish our dispersments um, on a monthly or every other month basis. Um, which are, uh, of course, the po- public posting places in front of town hall in the display box. And the newspaper of record is the Delta County Independent.
All right. Questions? Okay, seeing none. Would someone like to make a motion?
I moved that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one, public posting.
Do I hear a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. Any just more discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, that motion passes. Let's move on to Peonia Tree Board appointments. So we have. It says in the packet that we have two empty seats, but actually we have three empty seats. We can move up to six people on the board. We currently have five with two. Open seats. So we do. Have a third. So if the board wishes to appoint a third person, we can appoint a third person. So I was very remiss at the last time on the waterboard and I apologize to everyone who took part in that. And I will be sending out letters of apology to everyone that I did not allow the candidates to speak and I. Not going to do that again. So this time, is there anyone? Uh, Paula Martin, Greg Hottinger, Mariah Woolery, or Roger Beryl who would like to address the board? About taking a seat on the tree board? Yes, Greg?
Yeah, I don't know what to say, Mary. I just want to say I, I'd like to be considered for the tree board. You know, I've been trying to uh, work my way onto the tree board. For a while. And uh, yeah, I, I'm excited about the possibility of that. Certainly, I think there was a big year for the trees in, in this town and so, yeah, just want to be in, in uh. You know, I'd like to contribute to uh, development of a tree plan and, and working in conjunction with the sidewalk. Remediation. So I'd like to be part of that for this next term. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mariah, I see you're there too.
Yeah, I'll follow up with that. Um, I too would like to be considered for the tree board. It's something I've been. Kind of dancing around for a few years since arriving here in Peonia and, you know, our, our trees are incredibly valuable. To all of us and like Greg was saying, it was a big year this last year and. With the big, um, you know, rapport that came out from the state foresters and just seems like there's a lot of, a lot of potential at this time and. Thought it was really exciting what happened over on Box Elder and the way the community worked with the administrators and. I would like to be a part of more of that. So I too would like to be considered for the tree board.
Okay, thank you very much, Mariah. All right, so the other thing that I'd like to remind people is that. Even if you don't get appointed to the tree board, you can still serve in an ex officio manner. You just don't get a vote. So. Would the board like to nominate a person and or persons to the tree board? Yes, Tammy?
I assume it's okay being a member of the tree board or the, the. The board. Representative on the tree board that I can do this. Um, I do want to say that the people who have been on the board, Paula and Roger have both been great and. Very regularly attend meetings, a lot of input. Um, a lot of help. I am however going to, since I can do three, I'm going to um, motion that we uh. Appoint Paula Martin, Greg Hotiger, and Mariah, and Mariah, I don't know how to say your last name, Woolery, Woolu- Wooler-Lory. To the tree board.
Okay, you want to have a second on that?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Mariah needs to give us her, how she says her last name.
Yeah. Okay, say it again, Mariah.
Hoolalurie.
Hoolalurie. I've been saying it wrong all the time.
W, W is plenty.
Got it. All right. Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, I would just say, since Tammy has been serving on the tree board, I think she's in the best position to make that nomination, so I support her nominations.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Anything for, wait, Tammy? Yes?
Yeah, I do want to thank Roger. Um. And it's certainly nothing personal. I just saw a lot in Mariah's letter that I really liked and um. Roger is great and I hope he continues, if he's listening, I hope he continues to be a part of the board because he. Really is a valuable asset. So, nothing personal to Roger, but um. Paula has been outstanding. She keeps us all together. She keeps us all in line. Make sure we get all the information. And Greg has a lot of ideas. Everything I've heard from him is just really positive and. Um, and I'd like to urge the public when we do have meetings and um, we will try and keep those. Maybe posted on, on social media and so forth to, to attend some pretty nice meetings.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Yes, Dave?
Um, if Roger's looking for something to do, I invite him to join Dark Skies.
This is true. Okay, anything else from the public? All right, seeing none. We have a slate of tree board. People being put forward, that is Paula Martin, Greg Hottinger, and Mariah. Hoolalur- oh, forget it. Mariah. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It passes. Congratulations, Greg and Mariah. Glad to have you on the tree board.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and thank you for everyone who serves on the tree board. And again, thank you Roger for all your years of service. Yeah, I was on the tree board with Roger and Paula and, and yeah, have a lot of interaction with Mariah. And great, but uh, it's a great board and they do magnificent work. Thank you, Tammy, for taking on that as well. All right, moving on, let's move on to the Water Advisory Committee term limits. We almost got this through last time, but we managed to miss term limits. So. We have a new. Um, ordinance. Or resolution.
No, it, we're just referencing our ordinance uh, that established the, established the advisory water board. And I included the language in the agenda summary form. Um, where it shows that while we uh, filled the seats, we did not uh, follow all the way through with that and I apologize that I missed that. Um, on the initial go-round to actually determine. I apologize that I missed that on the initial go-round to actually determine who, how they're going to rotate, what the staggering of the terms are. So that's, they, so that was why I had included this, and my suggestion was that we just do a turnover every year, and my suggestion also was that we have term ends in August so that on the years when there's an election year, it gives new board members an opportunity to come onto the board and familiarize themselves with the board's function and capacity before they're trying to appoint someone to fill the seat. I think sometimes those appointments happen so quickly, it doesn't give new board members an opportunity to really know who or what they're voting for. So those were my suggestions, and I, with only three people, it was a little tricky to try to figure out how you stagger terms, which is why, and I also included the suggestion to do the drawing, but of course, I was in person when I was writing that and wasn't thinking about the fact that we're not in person to facilitate a drawing. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Dave?
I have an idea that would encourage attendance at our waterboard meetings, and that would be whoever misses the first, the most meetings during the first year has a one-year term.
Well...
Personally, I like, I like Corinne's approach to this, and perhaps, I believe that Tammy and I are scheduled for a meeting on the twentieth in person, so we could draw the names, but I like the approach of every year and the staggered terms, and the dates are appropriate for the August meeting, or August every year.
Yeah, I would agree. I think having you two do the random drawing would be really good.
We could do that, and then I can include it in the next packet, so everybody knows whose terms are what for the public.
Okay. I think that's a really good idea. Do we, don't have to do a motion on this or anything, do we? Corinne?
Um, I would, I would, because the ordinance states that the board will set the terms, so I would defer to Bo, but I would think that by making a motion stating that you were going, that you're having the Public Works Committee do the drawing to, and then report back on the term setting, that that would suffice, but I would do it by a motion.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to?
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, so.
All right, thank you, Bo. All right, someone would like to make a motion on that subject?
Bill, I move that the Public Works Committee draw by random drawing the three people's terms for the one-year, two-year, and three-year terms, and that the results of that be published at the next meeting, and I guess that's it, and that the terms begin and end in August.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? Okay, seeing none from the board, anything from the public? All right, seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, that motion passes. All right, we're on to ordinance twenty twenty one to be determined. I think this is just a discussion item, is that correct, Corinne? We're just looking at this.
I do believe, yes, this was the initial review, and Erin Watson with Dark Skies is on our meeting here as well, so that he could lead this. I know that it was their request that it be brought back to the board, so included in was the preliminary draft, and I included my notes and review as I went through as well, so they're included in the draft ordinance for the board's review.
Thank you. All right, Erin, I give the floor to you.
All right, hi, everyone, thanks for having me. Happy twenty twenty one. So, yeah, we're here to talk about the lighting ordinance, and what this would do would qualify Peonya to be an international dark sky community. And so we've worked with the International Dark Sky Association, and there are twenty eighteen guidelines, which is what our town is bound to right now, and we adapted the Ridgeway ordinance, so their ordinance that allowed them to be certified as a dark sky community, we've used a lot of language from there for Peonya. And so what we have here is a draft, and it's just a place to start. We, we put a call out for public comment, and we received a number of comments so that people can start to look at how this ordinance would affect the town and the residents. So the idea is to take comments and questions, see what all of you have to say about it, and then see if there's any changes or anything we need to add in there. Then we can take that back to the International Dark Sky Association and see that they, we have their approval, and then once we kind of coordinate there, we can work on passing it, and then we'll be able to be certified. That, this is the main, one of the major steps for the certification process.
Okay, thank you very much, Erin. All right, so questions for Erin or comments for Erin from the board? Yes, Bill?
My comment is, one, who's going to enforce these regulations? Are we going to have the police department doing, the building department, and who's going to be the arbiter of neighbor versus neighbor when these subjects come up about light pollution?
Oh, that's a good question, and we, you know, that isn't defined in this ordinance. It actually says in the draft, Town Manager. So that's really up to the town to decide how this is going to be enforced, whether it's going to be the council, or if there's going to be some kind of committee, or how that's going to work. So, yeah, I'm not, I don't have an answer, that's something we need to talk about and figure out, for sure.
You're, you're, we sign on to a bunch of essentially regulations that people are going to be required to live with, and I think we need to discuss how they're going to be enforced, who's going to do the enforcements, penalties associated, because personally, I'm against more regulations in town.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Other comments and questions? Yes, Tim?
Erin, I'm wondering if there's anybody from, did you say this is from Ridgeway that you adopted this?
Yes.
Is there anybody from Ridgway that might be able to talk about some of the experiences they've had since this has gone into effect? It'd be nice to hear from another community, or any thoughts on how that's going for them as far as what Bill was talking about, and just having suddenly having all of these rules that you have to abide by, and what the public reaction has been?
That's a great question, and, yeah, I can look into that and try to find some information for you, yeah.
Other questions? Comments? Yes, Dave?
I just wanted to point out a couple things in response to what Bill's saying. We started a problem-solving group that included Corinne, one member of the board, the police chief, and Public Works Director to kind of take up issues that might happen in neighborhoods around lighting like this. So that's one possible way forward. I understand the concern about regulations, but in order to get dark sky certification, we actually need to have some kind of enforcement or some kind of change in our lighting in order to protect the dark skies. The main thing that I think affects individuals, Bill, is when we get into individual properties, and that's probably what you're referring to, because we've already done everything with the streetlights and stuff, but now the rubber really meets the road because we're having to look at how neighbors are treating each other and whether there's light intrusion on each other. And there's about ten years this ordinance gives people to come into compliance, so I would hope that most of their light bulbs wear out by then, and what they do is try to replace those with more dark sky compliant. The comments from people in the public are worth reading, because there's some really good ideas in there about the idea of possibly some kind of a fund that is set up to help people that are finding financial difficulties and trying to comply with the ordinance and those types of things. But that's my review of it, and I just wanted to add that to it, I hope it helps.
Thanks. Other comments? Yes, Michelle?
Yeah, I want to say thanks to the committee for all the work on this. It shows a substantial amount of effort. I'm not sure, are CK comments in the document are those from Corinne? Okay, I thought they might be, I think there's some really great comments in there that I hope to see incorporated and fully incorporated into the text in the next draft that comes before us. I did notice one bit of language that I thought was a little confusing. This is on packet page sixty, item number five, it says, the language says that the items listed there are not intended to be achieved, so I don't really know what that means or why we would include it if we're not intending to achieve it. Just a note for the next draft.
I can answer that, just what, what I think that meant was, it's not meant to be achieved, so these are our maximum limits, and we're not trying to achieve the maximum amount of light, you know, we preferably keep it below the maximum limits, so that, I think that's what that wording meant.
It may need to be rewarded, to be clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
Other comments? Yeah, Corinne? Oh, you're still?
Yeah, sorry about that. I did want to let Erin know as well, and I do believe it's lightly touched upon, but we may want to expound on that I was contacted by the bank, and we need to make sure that we make sure that it's clear that security lighting and things that are regulated are also exempt, because I was informed that banks have federal regulations on some of the levels of security lights, and it may very well be that those lights fall within what we're asking through the ordinance, but I'm not familiar with what those are. I have requested that information, and will give that to you as soon as I get it.
Okay.
Okay, other comments? Okay, comments from the public? Thomas, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just looked up the Ridgeway ordinance, and their dark skies enforcement is administered by their building official or other authorized town officer or employee, and then they specifically say that a continuing violation is a nuisance which would then be turned over to court or officer, and then they also include no building permits will be issued that has non-compliant fixtures, and that's some of their enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Anything else from the public? Yes, Suzanne?
Hello, did you call on me, Mary?
Yes, I did.
This is Suzanne. Okay, didn't, you got cut off there. You know, I know it's lengthy, there's a lot of elements to this, but my basic concern is the light trespass. I think since the advent of LED bulbs, this has become a much bigger problem. They really cover a lot of area, and they are very blinding and glaring, to where when you step out of your back door at night, you can't, when you can't see the ground in front of you because a neighbor who's a hundred and fifty feet away's light is shining into your eyes, that's dangerous. And I would hate to see that type of, you know, I'd like to see this move forward in some way, so it's reasonable for everybody, but I, I do think sometimes neighbors aren't good neighbors, and like, I don't care if it's people's weeds encroaching on your property or other nuisances, but unfortunately, sometimes people don't know how to be good neighbors, and unfortunately, that's why sometimes we have to have these regulations. And I'd imagine it would be somewhat complaint-based, like our other nuisance ordinances, where, you know, they kind of sit there and they really become a go-to rule when there's an actual complaint that comes in, kind of like our ATV speed limits or something that we can't enforce because there's no signs up, but, well, that's a little off-topic, but, yeah, so I think the light trespassing has gotten worse over time because of the LED bulb, and that's a real big concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I would tend to concur, I really think that the people who gave us comments made some really trenchant comments, but I agree, yeah, Corinne hit most of my concerns as I was reading through this, and, yeah, we do need to figure out a mechanism for enforcing. If we're going to pass this thing, we need a way to enforce it, and so hearing from Ridgeway, and actually, their foot, feet-on-the-ground experience of enforcement, I think, would be really important as well, and whole grandfathering issues for us lights, I mean, does, if the property changes hands, does the new lighting agreement come into effect immediately, or do they keep it up and then have the ten-year expiration point? And who's keeping track of the ten-year expiration point, too? So, we have some issues to deal with, but thank you so much for all your work on this, Erin, and all the dark skies group, and it's probably going to take more than one tweet to get through, but I think we can achieve it in the end. Yes, Dave?
Just a final comment, I noticed that in some of the public comments, there's some questions about lighting in neighborhoods, and I wanted to ask Corinne whether she thought our little group should get together and at least respond to that, or ask them for further information?
Yeah, I'll take a look, I did review the notes, but I would like to re-review them, and then we can follow up with that.
All right. Anything else? Yes, Tammy?
I'll take the final comment, too, and definitely thanks, and I, Mary said if it's passed, I really hope it's not if, but when. If you want to see the difference between, say, downtown and a really dark street, come over to three hundred block of Orchard at night, we have no streetlights, and we have spectacular sky viewing, and we, we do not want to lose that, and we love it, we can go out any night and see the stars, and that's, I think that's the goal, and it's a wonderful goal, and can't wait for it to happen, so.
Thank you, Tammy. Yeah, Dave?
Finally, about the adaptive controls, I wanted to help our local football team, and we could put adaptive controls on the sporting lights, so when the opposing team has the ball, we can dim them.
Okay, good sportsmanship here, Willie. But the other point that nobody has brought up, that this is a real tourist attraction, and that you get a lot of notice for this, and people come to your town because of the dark skies, and so this could actually drive some business for our downtown and other businesses. All right, last chance to speak, we're moving on.
Can I just ask, Mayor Barker?
Yes.
Just as far as next step, so am I clear that the next step is for dark skies to kind of work on this draft and make something, answer all the questions and comments and make something more complete to bring to you?
Or to the committee?
It's been coming direct, this one was coming direct to the board, it hadn't been assigned to a committee. I know it initially was reviewed by committee, but then it was brought back to the board, so if, as it's going through its iterations, it can either come back to the board and incorporate some of these things, and have the board review again, and do that through the public, or if the majority board wants to send it back to committee, you can.
Does the board have a preference? Yes, Michelle?
Just a question on what the goal would be for taking it to committee versus bringing it back to the board?
I think would be to review the changes and make sure that what issues have been brought up have been resolved, at least that would be my take on it. Corinne, do you have a different one?
No, you could do that at the committee level, or we can, typically, we would just supply both the initial and then the revision, so you'd have the... Typically, we would just supply both the initial and then the revision. So you'd have the the. Ordinance that's in front of you right now and then the revised ordinance incorporating all of that information into the new one so that you could review side by side.
Okay, Karen, you have a comment?
I just thought that it, you know, there's a lot of stuff in here and we've we've. We've made two or three different comments that could be added or not added. And I thought it would be a committee would be better suited to to do that draft. And then that draft come to the board. Because the committee would decide pretty much. What to put in there.
Okay. Shall we do it via motion?
I moved that we send it to the committee. And I don't know.
Yeah, which committee are we talking?
That's that's Corinne and and Public Works and who were the other two?
Police and dark sky.
Dave, were you on that?
Oh, you're wanting to send it to the dark skies committee?
Yes.
The town committee. Okay.
No, the dark skies committee.
Okay, yes, Dave.
Yeah, I think I think that's wise because we've been kind of diving into it and dealing with the issues and maybe that would save the board some time and deliberation. If we looked at it first.
Okay, you want to second it then?
I second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Yeah, there was a hand in the audience. Suzanne?
Hi, hi, is there still time to write a comment? I I guess I was unaware of the written comment thing and I wasn't able to put mine down in words. So I I really would like the light light trespass and the 10 year thing to be addressed.
Okay, I could suggest you nail it to Corinne.
Okay, okay, so we'll get to the committee. Okay. Is there a buy date, like as soon as possible or what?
I would say as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Nope. All right, let that motion passes. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. We have three minutes and one liquor license renewal. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to accept our consent agenda?
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Yes, Dave.
I really wanted to appreciate that the minutes from the last meeting were there. It really helps me prepare for this meeting. When I see the minutes from the previous meeting right on the packet and I wanted to thank Amanda for that.
Thank you. All right, Tammy?
Just looking at the minutes. Page 83, the mayor's report, I think it was. Hold on just a sec. It said, there was a motion. It says the regular minutes. Let's see. No, that's not it. Hold on, let me find it. There's something was really not. Oh, darn it. Oh, here we go. Page 73. I'm sorry, page 73.
Okay.
My apologies. Let's go by fast. Okay. Page 73, there we go. It says motion made by Knutson seconded by Boderger and carried with five eyes. It doesn't say what the motion is. Was that to approve the?
Oh, good.
Yeah, I just didn't quite get what the motion was and maybe that's somebody else can tell me that it's show me that it's there, but I didn't quite get what what it was.
Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, I, the only motion that I abstained on at the. Hang on, let me make sure I'm looking at the right meeting. The only motions that I've abstained on recently at all were regarding the water board and the. One review of a, I believe it was a minor subdivision. Approval, yeah, a minor subdivision approval. Those were the two things that I abstained on. So I'm not sure. I think it was probably the minor subdivision in the November packet. So I think some information's missing.
Oh, I will look into that and then fix it.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Thank you for pointing that out, Tammy. I completely missed that. All right, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
You have a hand in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thomas, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. It's just a quick housekeeping item on the minutes. Actually, from July of 2020. Minutes for July 14 and July 28 are the same. Same document.
So that needs to be amended in the.
On the website, for clarification, is that on our, on the website in the link?
Yes, it is on the website, but the. Letterhead on it says the right date, but the content of the minutes are the same.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll get that fixed as well. All right, so. I think I heard all the ayes and the nays on accepting the consent agenda. All right, that motion passes. Next is the mayor's report. So.
Did we ever have the vote on that?
Yeah, I thought I got, we can vote again because I thought we started, everybody said aye, Thomas came in.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. So mayor's report. So I was asked by Molly Bly of CDOT in downtown Colorado Inc. to do a presentation on our. CDOT grant where we did the street painting. And I did that on Thursday and it was exceptionally well received. And this was really a kudo to us. Because of all the CDOT grants that they have given out, they asked us to represent small communities in this. And so it was a recognition of the town and the town's project on a state level, which is really good for us. Because it puts us on the state radar. So the next time we write a grant, they go, oh, Peonia, Peonia does a good job. We should give them a grant. And this grant, I want to remind you, not only has it now provided the wayfinding sign. In Polis Park. It's also providing tables and benches around Town Hall. And probably a table in Polis Park, and we are probably going to be able to complete all the Polis Park upgrades with this grant money. So this CDOT grant, even though we had a bump in that people weren't thrilled about the street repainting. We had information we now put in the master plan about that. As well as all these other benefits. So this really was a beneficial grant, even though it may not have seemed like it at times. And so there's another CDOT grant coming up that we're investigating. This one might actually have sidewalk money in it. And so we are going to look at this grant as well. So it's good that the state sees us as a productive partner. All right, that's all I have. Committee reports. That's a finance and personnel, Dave and Karen.
Well, Thomas already mentioned earlier that he wants to help us with finance and so we're signing checks tomorrow at 9:30 in the morning.
9:15.
9:15 tomorrow. He's more than.
Be allowed to attend it?
Sure, it's open to the public.
Yeah, come on down, wear a mask. All right, Governor Affairs and Public Safety, Nick and Michelle? Either one of you? Nobody's stoned, everybody just smiling.
Well, there's really not a whole lot to report. Our last meeting was yesterday. Via Zoom. No one from the public attended. We did discuss. How how back the badges is working and. I think Chief Ferguson reported a few of those things that. You know, with approval of the vehicle and and that sort of thing. One thing that we are going to have this coming Thursday is a let's talk STRs. Short term rentals. So that'll be via Zoom at six o'clock. So everyone is invited to attend. That will be via Zoom. We did. We discussed, I guess that's about it. Anything else, Michelle?
No, that pretty much covers it. We did set a time for our next meeting. So that's going to be. February, I don't have my calendar up.
Believe it was the, was it the 11th?
It's the the Monday before our first Tuesday meeting in February.
February 8 at 3:00 PM. You're welcome. February 8 at 3:00 PM, the link will be added to the town calendar with the Zoom link because we have scheduled that, of course, virtual. Until otherwise determined.
Yes. Yeah.
Right. And we are still working on accessory dwelling units. Corinne is in communication with Attorney Nerlin on the next steps for that to make sure that we can get a good ordinance about that in front of the board in the coming. Month, maybe sometime soon.
Oh, thank you. All right, Public Works, Facilities, Utilities, Nick and, or Tammy and Bill?
We haven't met yet. Our next meeting is scheduled for the 20th of January. So we're going to meet hopefully in person. And have our discussion then and we'll be able to report it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and Tree Board, Tammy?
Button, there we go. It's not a touchy button. So for the 14th year in a row, Peonia has been declared a Tree City USA community by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Thank you to Tree Board members, especially Paula for getting all that together and submitting it on time. Yay. And really nothing to report until the Forest Service Tree, State Forest Service Tree Survey is. In and reviewed and that's supposed to be the end of January. The only other thing is the Arbor Day Foundation is for the first time in 20 years. Holding, hosting a Tree City USA conference. It will be a virtual conference, February 10, 17, and 24. If anybody wants more information and that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. All right, next item on the agenda is the executive session. Bill, you want to read the verbiage?
Yes. I move that we go into executive session for the suspension of personnel matter. Under CRS section 24 dash 6 dash 402 for F. And not involving any specific employee who have requested discussions of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or elected official. Or personnel policies that do not require the discussion. The matters personal to particular employees specific to the town administrator's six month review. Also for conference with town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. On specific legal questions under CRS. Section 24 dash 6 dash 402 for B specific to the Eric Pace versus town of Peonia.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay, all in favor of going into executive session?
Hi.
Okay, we are in executive session. Do our breakout room, Corinne. I think we all just hang tough and chill and let us know when we're in.
Yes, I think I I did a lot of research and I think I've got this figured out. So we will see. You should have an invitation.
In our email?
No, I'm gonna. Let's see. Okay. So I sent it. All right, let me.